Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Here.
Montero?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Yusefian?
Here.
Mayor Njerian?
Here. Will you read the item into the record?
Do you like me to read the report first?
I'll read the report first.
Agenda for the July 31st, 2007 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 26th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The item before you today is Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, Director of Libraries, Regarding Council Discussion of Proposed Ordinance and Resolution Adopting Development Impact Fees for Parks and Libraries. A 2A is motion directing staff to prepare revision to draft ordinance to notice a public hearing for the consideration of the adoption of the proposed development of impact fee ordinances and fee resolution, and provide all additional notices as required by law.
Mr. Starbuck?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, some quick background, then I'll turn to George, just by way of what seems like a distant history now. We began this discussion of the implementation of a park library open space impact fee a couple of years ago, if not longer. And the last form of the discussion with the council had preceded a request that we worked with the development community, and that goes back about a year ago. We subsequently spent a number of meetings with representatives of current developers, real estate community, Chamber of Commerce, in working through what I came to call sort of the compromise solution. It wasn't necessarily what everybody wanted, but it seemed to be a compromise that could move us forward to implementing a fee that at least most of those interest groups felt they could live with. The one exception was the Chamber Commerce Board Directors that has continued to take a position opposed to the implementation of impact fees. This matter was brought to you in this same form
February?
In February. And at that time, we identified an error in the commercial rates, and so with that, we pulled it off the agenda until that could be rectified. But the recommendation for the residential unit rates and the compromise structure really hasn't changed. There's just been a correction and update to the rates applicable to commercial. Actually, they've gone down by about 50%.
At least 50%.
From what they were originally noted as. And we'll let the consultant explain how that occurred. With that, let me go to George Chapchan.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it was in February. We were supposed to come back, I think, last month sometime. We were here in February.
Had it on the agenda, so it must have been in May or June, I think. And then we pulled it off quickly because we identified the error.
Yeah, and the last time we were here was in February, and there were several issues the council really wanted us to address. Wanted to see a phase-in fee, which we did provide. Provide credits for some forms of development, commercial development, whether they were auto dealerships, hotels, that sort of thing, that just generated a lot of revenue for the city. And also address the potential credits for onsite amenities, and we'll get into that. But what I do want to do right now is ask Bob Spencer to come up, and Bob is one of the principal consultants for Muni Financial who did the study. I'd like him to go through the study again and talk about some of the changes in the numbers that Mr. Starbuck talked about, which really effectively reduced the commercial industrial rates by 50% or a little bit more.
Mr. Weaver?
There's two or three things in here that you want our direction on.
Mm-hmm. We want some policy.
So as he gets to those, can we?
Sure. He has his PowerPoint. We have ours in terms of the policy directions we'd like from council.
The sets of PowerPoints?
Well, his is more the technical piece of it.
I can be brief.
Mr. Mayor, again, it has seemed to me, you've been through the technical aspects of this, you know, the basis for the formation, the original study that was done that established the maximum justifiable rate. It would be good to have a very quick explanation as to the error that occurred on the commercial rate and what effect that has had on the figures that are in your staff report. But quickly on that, would I suggest we move back to where we would have been had we taken this matter up two months ago when we last intended? You'd last directed us to bring you a draft ordinance. That's in your packet. It also takes you through the various options that we need direction on in order to finalize that ordinance, and we can take you through those. But that would probably be better time spent, as opposed to going back to the history and the methodology again.
I think that's the procedure that we're gonna get most support. I'm sorry.
Probably don't need, just a quick explanation by the consultant of what happened with the rates.
We can skip the PowerPoint. If you'd like to go straight to the policy discussion, and I'm here for questions should they come up. Bob Spen-- sorry.
I think, Mr. Smith, I think we owe at least a brief explanation as to how the commercial rates got revised without getting into it in too much detail. We know there was a miscalculation the first time. And tell us what those are, and then perhaps we can pick up with Mr. Chapchan and relatively quickly get through his issues that he needs to raise.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'll do that orally. I'll dispense with the PowerPoint since that's the technical background that you've largely seen before, and just explain briefly that the source of the error had to do with the weighting factor that we apply to employees in coming up with the fee per square foot based on employment. So this is the non-residential fee as opposed to the residential fee. If you may remember, staff with our guidance completed a survey of park users. We came up with a weighting factor for employees. Employees use parks less than residents. That weighting factor is about .45, so one employee uses a park at about 45% of the level of a resident, based on those user surveys. And the error occurred when the, in the final fee calculation table referenced the resident rate rather than the 45% reduction for the employee rate. So really, the fees you'll see are 55% lower because it's a 45% weighting factor. So that was the simple error. Apologize for that. We ran the whole model back through our internal auditor and double and triple-checked everything, so I think we're good to go. And unless there are any other questions on the background of the study and--
Just to note, it did not affect the residential rate, so both the maximum allowable, if you were so inclined, stays the same, something in excess of $14,000 a unit. And the staged compromise approach, which is the $2,000 pipeline, and then $3,500 beginning for new projects in '07, will still be applicable. Those numbers didn't change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chapchan?
Thank you, Mayor Njerian. And we also, I mean, we can skip the majority of our PowerPoint as well. We do need policy direction from the city council on a number of issues, and we'll go through that, maybe at least outline in bullets in the PowerPoint in terms of where we need policy direction from. Henry, do you want to pull that up? Okay, we'll skip that, and we'll go straight to--
George, we can. Back up two slides. Let's remind everybody of the rates that we're talking about. You have a table there on the base, and here we go. I mean, this is the important table to keep in mind, which is the $2,000 per unit for pipeline projects, and that is any project that has its stage-two environmental and design review would be a pipeline project.
Stage one.
Stage one. Pardon me, stage one. And then they'd have three years in which to pull building permits to keep the pipeline rate. If they didn't pull permits within three years, then whenever they pulled permits, the applicable new projects rate would apply, right?
Right.
So let's say they end up not completing it in 2000, or in their three years. Let's say they started in 2007, so in 2010, they still haven't pulled permits, and they lost their grandfather. They'd come in as a new project under the 2010 second phase or $7,000 a unit.
Right. And as Mr. Starbuck said earlier, this was agreed upon. We had numerous meetings with the development community. Again, the Chamber of Commerce Board Directors voted not to support this, but the development community did. The phase-in projects that you'll see are about, here, go back to the next slide. This is the full fair share, less the open space. We did take out the open space as instructed by the city council back in February. And the total fees would be $14,197 with park and library fees, and that's without the open space. And if you go back, Henry, to the previous slide, as you see, phase one is basically about 25% of the full fair share. Phase two would be equivalent to about 50%, and phase three would be about 75% of the full fair share. And the same applies to commercial office and industrial. It's prorated based on that same formula. Okay? Let's move on then. Next slide. Okay. Again, you asked us to look at fee exemptions, credits and reductions. One was for public benefit projects such as affordable housing, hospitals, schools. Exemptions or reductions for revenue-producing projects such as auto dealerships and hotels that generate significant sales tax or transient occupancy tax dollars. Also, for specified private open space or park or recreational facilities that the developer may want to include in his development. That would be in addition to what zoning requires of the development. Sometimes zoning does require some open space. Also, at last time we spoke, or we were here, what we heard from the city council was for second residential units that someone may have, you want that exempted, is what we thought we heard, and we put that exemption in there as a recommendation. And then a fee reduction or even an exemption from anything that has a nominal square footage. If people are building commercial spaces less than 1,500 square feet, maybe council decides on a policy level to exempt them or reduce the rate of the impact fee for that. Start off with affordable housing. And we looked at initially three options for affordable housing. The agenda report went through several iterations, and during that time, we looked at, staff looked at also a fourth option, and we included that slide for the fourth option. One option would be provide an exemption to any residential project where 15% of the units are either rented to low-income households and restricted for 55 years, or sold to modern-income households at a restricted purchase price. Option two would be, again, this option is the same as option one, but would not apply to projects provided with financial assistance by the housing authority. Option three would provide discounts of the impact fee to those developments where 15% of units are restricted to low rental or moderate-for-sale households. Difference between option one and three is this is a discount, the other one is an exemption in terms of the recommendation. And then the fourth option we looked at is council may want to consider, if 20% of the units are affordable, maybe a 100% exemption. And as it's reduced in terms of affordability, so too does the exemption get reduced, down to perhaps, you know, 25% for a 5% affordable.
Mr. Weaver?
Simplify it. See if I'm right in saying this. If we put the maximum on impact fee on the affordable housing, the rate of the unit goes up, right? No, if we put the maximum on, then, the maximum deduction, then the unit cost goes down. But then we retain money for more parks and libraries? Or is it the reverse? If we charge, if we put the most impact fee on, okay, then we get more dollars for parks and libraries. If we do the reverse and don't put any impact fee on--
You get more housing.
We get more in housing, but we get less for parks and rec. So it's a question, we're taking out of one pocket and putting in another pocket. It's a question of which we want to do, or do we want to balance it?
Right. And that's really a policy issue.
Sorry, I got it mixed up there.
Mr. Chapchan, could you go to those other options? My question would be, let's say someone is in the redevelopment area, and they, let's say they pay the in-lu fee. Is there still an impact fee then, under any of these options?
Yes.
Well, option one says it provides an exemption where 15%. So the in-lu fee is in lieu of offering 15%?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, the, all the exemption proposals assume that the developer would build the units instead of paying the in-lu fee, and that's the way they're designed to provide the incentive for actually building the units. So if somebody was paying the in-lu fee, they wouldn't get an exemption from the parks impact fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's move on. Okay. Again, the next policy issue again is auto dealerships, and, you know, whether or not auto dealerships should get a reduced fee or an exemption, really, again, is the council's decision. Just let you know, the cost to develop auto dealerships is high, and the employee-to-square-foot ratio is lower compared to other commercial developments. We had Cal Hollis look at this issue as well as the issue of the hotels. And Cal's recommendation, Cal's from Kaiser Marston, was to reduce that fee for auto dealerships down to the industrial rate because of that factor. He was recommending that the assessment be at the industrial rate, which is 67 cents versus $1.34, substantial savings for auto dealerships. And again, the, we looked at maybe assessing only the sales area versus the entire service area, because the service area includes bays and things like that that wouldn't be impacted. And similarly, for hotel developments. Again, the cost to develop hotels is just as expensive as, or more expensive than other commercial developments. And Mr. Hollis was, again, recommending that we charge an industrial rate versus $1.34 for the commercial rate for the hotels. Same as the auto dealerships, the ratio of the cost and employees per square footage is lower than other potential commercial and office uses. And that's why Cal Hollis was recommending the industrial rate. Again, exemptions for additional square footage. Should a minimum amount of square footage be exempt from smaller developments? If, you know, if a store wanted to increase their size by 700 square feet, you know, should there be a threshold, and should that be about 1,500 square feet? Again, policy decision that we'd like from you so that we can move forward with potentially drafting an ordinance to that effect. Henry? Minimum threshold for dedication of in-lu or paying a fee. We're recommending that at least be set at a million threshold because of the land, the price of land here in Glendale. As you know, we've paid up to equivalent $4 million an acre for vacant parcels. So we recommend at least a minimum of $1 million threshold for the payment in-lu. And again, another policy issue here, should developers receive credit for providing private open space, park and recreation facilities in excess of code requirements? You know, our recommendation would be if they do, they receive between 5% and 15%. It's really hard to provide all of the elements in one development. We still have impacts to ball fields that new residents are going to be impacting. They certainly can provide a tot lot. That may take care of some of the issues, but some of the other bigger global cumulative effects won't be mitigated by that. So if there is a credit, you know, we do have a recommended 15% to 25%. And then credits for private open space against, again, significant credits against the current phase-in fee amount. It'll diminish the impact fee funds, as you know. And then call into question whether private onsite facilities can sufficiently substitute for the loss of fee revenue to parks, public park and libraries that benefit the overall public. I think we did talk about this, second units, you know, should they, what I thought I heard from the council is you want to see an exemption for a second unit on a single-family residential lot. It can be 50%. It can be--
Like a guest house?
This was back in February. I'm sorry?
Talking about constructing a guest house?
Yeah, like a guest house. If you have a house, if you have an area in the back and you want to construct a granny flat, that'd be exempted from--
We don't allow that by zoning. I just wanted to let you know.
There needs to be some clarification. As I was reading this, the same question came to my mind. Did this reference the granny flat?
Yeah.
Or was this somebody who was in a multifamily zone that would permit two units, but you have a single-family home on there now? Are they given a second unit for free, so to speak, or would they have to pay the fee? There's a big difference between that and a traditional granny flat, which is really kind of a guest house that's tucked on the back of each property. So we should clarify what the intent was.
Mr. Mayor--
Does that mind?
Yeah, members of the city council. The intent was what you just alluded to, Mr. Starbuck, and that is for areas that are already zoned for multifamily. One of the policy considerations is whether or not to allow them to have one unit for free, or assess it at a 50% rate, for example. But if they go beyond that, and the ordinance talks about if they then serially add additional units, then we would assess for the second unit and for the first unit. Were they to add two? And so on and so forth. So if they were to add one, okay, you're fine, but if you add an additional unit or more, then we would go back and assess for all of them, because clearly the intention was to develop a multifamily project at that point.
Do they have to pay school fees if, let's say they did the same flag of thing?
I think school fees are collected on everything, including just additions. I don't know what the--
At the building permit--
I don't know what the minimum square footage is, whether there's a level below which you don't have to pay school fees, but they collect--
You want some input at this point, or you want to get through the presentation?
I think we're almost through the presentation, and we can just list them one by one and start getting some input from them.
Well, what might be useful, Mr. Mayor, is maybe go through the presentation, get any questions answered. Then I know you've got a number of cards you may want to hear from the public on these various items. And then if the council's inclined to proceed with the ordinance, then the ordinance sets forth all of these policy questions. You need to choose what direction you'd like to give us. We can fill in the blanks in the ordinance.
Okay. Backfill is an issue, Henry. Important issue, I think. The city attorneys have determined that if the fee ordinance provides exemptions or discounts, the city would not need to backfill with other general fund revenues or other funding sources. So that is an important distinction at this point. Finally, the SEQA implications. And we talked about this before. SEQA recognizes fee-based mitigation is adequate mitigation for cumulative impacts. At some point, you know, even though these fees are low, you will be getting projects before you that may require overriding consideration, because they just may not mitigate the impact, the full impact, the cumulative impact of a project. We are at a critical point in the city where almost every project does have a cumulative impact. And again, it's a case-by-case issue, and the attorneys look at those. But the larger ones, even though you do have a lower impact fee, will have to address mitigation.
Mr. Weaver?
Are you saying if there's more than one item in the SEQA document that cannot be mitigated for, that this alone provides adequate mitigation for the cumulative impact?
Mr. Starbuck?
Yeah?
We've talked about this before, but it's really just the opposite. I suspect, well--
Wait, it's written.
That this, if we adopt the stepped phased approach, then you will still have the problem of the SEQA review still finding that there could be an impact for which if it isn't full, because a partial fee will not fully mitigate the impact, for which then, unless there's some other means of mitigating it, the council or agency will still have to make a determination of overriding considerations in order to move forward. I suspect greater impact on that issue will come when the planning department updates the general plan. And we begin to address in the recreation element, for example, the, some of the standards that we have embedded in the general plan, partially which is driving this issue under SEQA when we do the evaluation. Now, may not take it away entirely, but you'll probably have as big an impact there as you would by adopting a lesser fee. About the only way currently you can address that, Jillian, correct me if I'm wrong, is if the council adopted the full $14,000 fee.
Right.
Then you've got full mitigation. But anything less than that, you don't have full mitigation.
That's correct, Mr. Starbuck. And that's pursuant to SEQA statute, that the full fair share fee program is considered per statute to be adequate mitigation under SEQA. And something less than that is something that we would need to consider on a case-by-case basis to take a look at, the level of fees being paid, the location of that particular project in relation to other cumulative projects to determine the level of impact that it has, and whether that is significant.
Rule of thumb would be smaller projects, probably not of big impact. Larger projects, just like we faced today. This isn't going to completely remove the impact question. But like I say, I think we'll make more headway in that regard as we take up the general plan and look at those standards that are currently embedded in our general plan and the elements there, too.
Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian? By my understanding is even if you have a full impact, and SEQA basically says this is unavoidable impact in your EIR, the council can approve the project under the overriding consideration.
That's correct.
So it's not one of those cases that if you have an impact, you're forced to paying that. If it's a project that makes sense for the community and the council feels that there is a definite positive aspect to that, so that we could do overriding considerations and move on.
Correct. Yeah.
I think for a developer, there's another implication, and that is whether or not, for example, if parks was the only impact, whether or not they could get a mitigated NAGDEC, for example. On a partial fee, you probably won't be able to, you know, if it's a bigger project. Again, you got to look at it project by project, but you probably have the less ability, the bigger the project, with a partial fee than you would if you opted to pay a full fee. But then again, a developer can make that business decision.
And it also depends on the size of the development.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
If you're doing a 200-unit development, you're going to have to do a full EIR regardless of whether you pay it or you don't pay it.
You'll have a lot of issues besides parks that's going to come into play.
You got traffic, you got all kinds.
Okay. And that would do it, really. And now we can go back if you want to talk about the various issues that we need direction on, council policy direction on. Start off with affordable housing.
I wanted you to, once again, talk about the pipeline projects at 2,000, that's clear. Then new projects pulling permits or starting the process in 2007, they're automatically at 3,500, is that correct?
Right, they're 3,500, yes.
And if I can, then that would last until 2010, in which case a project that hadn't gotten started in 2007. And you could be a 2007 pipeline project. If you didn't pull your building permits by 2010, then when you, except for the initial pipeline projects, the indicator of which fee you pay is going to be when you pull your permit, correct? So if you happen to start your project in 2007, but you don't get around to pulling your permits until 2010, you're going to be in the 2010 $7,000 range.
And do you have some ballpark number in terms of how many current pipeline projects we have?
Well, we did it one time.
We're talking about?
We just--
That it cleared phase one, right? That's the standard.
Phase one, one.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say there's five pipeline projects, housing projects. We would consider the DPSS project that is being scheduled for design review as a sixth. With those, there's probably 15 to 1,700 units.
Now, those are basically redevelopment areas. How about out in the, let's call it the rest of Glendale, how many pipeline projects do you estimate are out there?
Well, I don't know if there are any pending design review. We were just compiling a list of some of the major projects. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can try and resurrect that for you.
Mr. Yusefian?
My question was on the dates. Are these fast dates? I mean, there's no way to change the dates. I mean, we haven't passed an ordinance, so if we want to change the dates from 2007 to 2010, or 2010 to 2013, or so on and so forth, we can do that, right? We can modify this in ordinance.
Right. It's council policy.
And so that's one opportunity we have.
You might get a little more feedback if you propose pushing the pipeline dates forward, but I doubt you'd get an objection pushing them back.
Well, and that's, I mean, when we came to council discussions, I have some issues to discuss. And so, I mean, I have some philosophical issues to deal with, also some reality that is happening in the real world out there with what is happening with the market and the amount of foreclosures that is out there, and developers running every which way to outside this country if they could. I mean, those are some of the things that is not reflected in here. And when staff prepared this and with council went there, that's when the market was booming, and every day, the price kept going higher and higher and higher, and developers had no worries about selling any of those projects. I guess that seven-year cycle just went and ended, and everything started to go down, so.
And I think Councilman Yusefian, that last time we spoke, we spoke about annual yearly review of this, and market factors, and whether or not the council would want to roll it back, that kind of thing. So that also is built in, and annual review is built in.
And also, I keep in mind what-- And also, I keep in mind what is happening with San Fernando Corridor, and what we have on the Inlufi, and how many projects we have seen there that is not happening. So all of those things have a lot to do, and I'll, I mean, some of the information that I got, I get Mr., our mayor also did, when we went to the League of California Cities, and what was happening in there, the rest of the state of California. So it's not just us. We're not operating in vacuum. There's more than just us.
George, why don't we hear from the public, and then we can go through this and go through the issues. I'm going to allow three minutes. Vigen Guesarian.
Speaker speaking for an organization.
And if you are speaking for an organization or group, please let us know.
Okay. I'm speaking on my own behalf, actually. Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff, good afternoon. My name is Vigen Guesarian. I'm a property owner in the city, and I'm here to say that the impact fees as proposed are excessive, especially the fees proposed for later years. I believe they will suffocate development in Glendale, especially under the current economic conditions, and in light of foreclosures, as stated before, and in light of the fact that the sales compared to last year have gone down across the board 26%, 28% in the LA County. The second issue I have with the proposed impact fees are, I believe, lack of input from the stakeholders, who are the property owners and smaller developers. In your city council meetings, repeatedly you've advised the staff to meet with the developer communities to discuss the impact fees. Unfortunately, the staff has only met with the largest developers, who either have a pipeline project or will submit plans shortly. These large developers will probably fall into the $2,000-per-unit, or at most $3,500-per-unit for a fee range. Most of these developers are out of town and out of state entities, and are eager to build and get out. Payment of $2,000 per unit may be okay with them now, because they will be gone by the time the fees increase to $7,000 and $10,500 per unit. The real stakeholders, or the people with the most adverse impact, are the property owners and smaller developers. The staff has completely circumvented the smaller developers and property owners from these meetings. None of these people were invited to the city's committee meetings, where they developed this pricing. The developer community that the city refers to consisted of two large developers with projects in the pipeline, a planning consultant, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Glendale Association of Realtors representative. I personally tried to attend the meetings, but I was told that the meetings were by invitation only. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the Board of Directors of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, has completely opposed these fees altogether, perhaps because the chamber consists of smaller business owners, developers, and property owners in this town, rather than out of state. They're the ones most affected by these outrageous fees. They're the ones who will get less for their properties, because the developer will subtract the cost of the impact fees from the property value, then make an offer. As another example, I did not know about this meeting until late this morning. Somebody called me and informed me. Nobody from the stakeholders is aware of these meetings, and they are not informed. Thirdly, the future increases should not be automatic. It should have provisions for review, analysis, and discussion, I have 10 seconds, before any new increases become effective. The staff is eager to make the increases automatic without regards to the impact that these fees will have on the city, such as the current economic conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Yes, in lieu of what the speaker was saying, I'd like to know about that, about who might have been excluded, if you will. That's not the word I really mean. What was that process?
How inclusive was our process?
It's hard to describe who was excluded. The people who were invited to the meeting, he's correct, was Board of Realtors, Chamber of Commerce, consultants who have represented small and large developers, and the major projects that are in the pipeline. That's correct.
Was AYSO invited, or Park Lovers, or any of that, the other end? Those are the industry groups, the trade groups, but do we know if anyone from the other side was? Or were we just looking to see, look at the opposition groups?
Well, it wasn't the opposition, I thought. We looked at the development community, and we did call in the development community.
So did we go out to find a small developer or a small property owner? No.
Well, and I think that's the point the speaker was making, that in fact, for, if you want to call them mom-and-pops, or just smaller property owners, whatever it is, people who have multifamily lots in the city, was there any outreach at all to them? I mean, they may only be building six condos, eight condos, 10 or 12. Were they also contacted?
Individuals specifically? No. I mean, you've had two years of meetings talking about this, in various public meetings, but did we try to find a small property owner to include in the meeting? No. I mean, you've got Board of Realtors who represent all kinds of people, you've got Chamber of Commerce who represents small and medium, and maybe some large, and you've got consultants who have probably worked on small projects and large projects. But did we try and find individuals who own a small piece of property? No, we didn't. If that's a deficiency, then it's a deficiency.
Mr. Draymond.
No, I didn't mean, with my question anyway, I didn't mean, did we have an outreach specifically to specific developers with a small D. I just meant, in general, were we trying to cast a net that was broad enough or wide enough to have that, the concerns of that speaker included? I mean, the substance of what he was saying is, in an attempt to be included, they were essentially told, no, this is not for you. And that's what I'm...
I guess our view is we walked down this road, and have been for quite some time, that we were being pretty inclusive by the broad groups. We'd included, again, Board of Realtors, and their representatives represent small property sales, large property sales, and the likes. We didn't try to find a developer who does small projects, for example.
At some point also, I think we were two meetings down the road, and I think he wanted to come into the meeting, and it was, I don't want to say we were making some progress, it would have been taking a step back again, although his interests were representative. We understood where he was coming from, other developers were there, even small developers. So we tried to be as inclusive as possible, given the timeframe that we had and the resources.
Okay, thank you. On this issue...
Well, I just know for myself, over the last couple of years we've been on this, at least.
Two and a half.
We sent you back, because we were hearing that fees were outrageous, to go out and meet with the public. And we've had a lot of meetings since then, and I've received not one single email from anybody on impact fees, for or con, so.
This issue also came up at our Parks and Recreation Commission, so people heard about it there as well.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen, representing Vanguardians. I think the last speaker did raise at least one good point, and that is that as the impact fees, as the years go on, the impact fees increase. But I think there should only be an increase if there is an increase on the use of the infrastructure, on the libraries and the parks. And I think that in reality, these fees are going to be used to offset general fund fees and CIP funds, so that we can put more money into payroll. Now, there's another issue that kind of bothered me, and it was the one on Table 5.2, on the open space existing standard. And what your consultant did was they took the Flynn Canyon property, which was the most recently purchased property, and it was purchased, as I recall, without an appraisal by the city. And according to this particular document, it shows the property is not yet worth what the city paid for it. But yet you took the amount that was paid, and you spread it out, and you came up with this figure of $1,731 of a cost per capita. And actually, what you're saying is that this is the cost of the open space, but you're basing that cost of the open space on what you're predicting to be today's market value, not for what you paid for it at the time that you paid for it, because the market value is going down, as we see in the real estate industry. And I don't think that was taken into consideration in order for you to come up with the cost per capita. And I think that needs to, I think the development community, who's going to be paying these fees, I think they need to address that, and I think the city needs to address that particular issue. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Starber.
Do you want some response to some of these as we go along, or do you want to wait till the end? I just wanted to know, with respect to the open space fee, we noted we dropped that component out of the assessment fee.
Fully, yeah.
Yeah, completely, so...
So that section was...
So his argument would be moot, because the open space fees aren't included in the assessment.
And also, I think the general fund, this does not go into pay, to the payroll of the general fund.
This has to be accounted for separately for park improvements.
Okay. Next speaker is Rodney Khan.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Rodney Khan. A few thoughts, kind of random and scattered. Some people think most of my presentations are that way. The first, as it relates to the auto dealers, the hotels, hotel condo-type projects being exempt. There was a comment made about fewer employees or the cost to develop these facilities. The bottom line is they generate significant amount of taxes. And in terms of backfilling, any impacts they would generate, to me, it would make a lot of sense to exempt those projects, just flat-out exempt them. Hospitals, schools, churches, educational facilities, and I would also include affordable housing projects, I think they should be exempted as well, for the many benefits that they provide over and above. There was a comment Mr. Yusefian made about pushing this out. I hadn't thought of that, but I think that's an excellent idea. In terms of future dates, is the market in a downturn? How does this impact development? Those are some thoughts that certainly are worthy of exploration. In terms of when the fee is paid, that was something that we were talking about and thinking about. Is it paid typically, or what is being suggested? Is it paid at the issuance of a building permit? Or should it be paid when the certificate of occupancy is issued? Because the impact really doesn't occur until the building is occupied and people are actually using the facilities. I told you I was random and kind of scattered. The onsite recreational amenities, in terms of staff suggesting a maximum of 25%. I think the 25% actually came from looking at some other cities, or maybe one other city, I'm not sure. I don't know how that criteria works. Could it be 40%? Could it be 50%? And also, as it relates to the amenities themselves, it would be interesting for us in the development community, as we're designing projects, for instance, if you were to incorporate a swimming pool, maybe you would get a 10% credit, because at least then we'd be able to figure out, okay, let's factor this in. This is how much it costs, this is what the benefit is, let's do this, as opposed to just not knowing what it is that we're going to get a credit for. We may incorporate a significant or insignificant amount, and not be able to do the kind of a cost-benefit analysis. That would certainly help, at least me. In terms of the dollar figure, when we sat down, and there was, Mr. Starber is correct, there was a number of different meetings that took place, and it started off, you know, we were at a very high number, and then it, is that my time's up?
That's your time, right.
Okay, 30 more seconds, and I'll wrap it up real quick, if that's okay. We started off at a high number, we came down to a lower number. The larger projects that are in town did agree to the $2,000 amount for the pipeline for the multifamily residential. They were comfortable with that. There was a previous speaker that said the smaller property owners had not been consulted. In terms of their input, whether they were comfortable with it or not, I don't know, but the larger ones were. I'll conclude my remarks, because my time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Garcia, doesn't the city consult with a law firm called Random and Scattered? Is that one of them?
You forgot rambling.
Rambling?
He was scattered. I don't think he was rambling.
Okay. Next speaker is Laura Olhaso.
Good afternoon, Laura Olhaso, representing the Glendale Association of Realtors. We were pleased to be part of the study group. We appreciated that invitation, and felt that we were a valuable member of it. My Board of Directors has approved the current compromise plan, mainly because in addition to selling homes, we sell community. And the community is based on not only just the neighborhood, but the parks, and the libraries, and the soccer fields, and the things that people want in their community. And we believe that development should pay part of its fair share of its coming impact on those pieces of community. The key is the fair share. We think that the current rate is fair, will probably not exacerbate the current housing slowdown. And frankly, with as many things as you want to happen, particularly in your downtown-specific area, if they aren't happening in the next three years, I would suggest that you would look long and hard about increasing this fee three years from now, because there are too many wonderful things that you want to happen, and you don't want to put anything in their way. So we would support the current proposal, and looking at it again as required by the ordinance in three years. The one thing that I am concerned about in reading the draft ordinance, the study group itself understood that there needed to be some sort of annual increase that reflected probably CPI. And the draft ordinance, page 24, calls for this annual adjustment, but based on the percentage equal to the inflation rate of the prior year of construction costs. And I think that is most likely very high, and is not reflective of what the advisory or the study committee was kind of cognizant of what they thought was what we were talking about, which is a CPI increase. And I would say that whether it's an increase of construction costs, well, for what? I mean, if costs of construction have increased for asphalt or for steel, and you're putting in a soccer field, then that would not be necessarily reflective of the increased costs. So when you get to that ordinance, I would hope that you would look at that, again, page 24, item A, very carefully, and go back to study that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only speakers that I have. And why don't we couch our comments with regard to the items, the bullet points on the board there, at least, and you can address any other object, any other subjects as well. But let's at least get some comment on that.
As usual. One thing that this last speaker spoke about is absolutely correct. If you went by custom construction, over last year, there's a 15% increase. Depending on what item you're looking at, if you're looking just on copper, that's a 40% increase. So I think that is a little bit unreasonable. If we were talking about dealing with the ordinance, I think if you're going to do CPI, it needs to be just CPI, not cost of construction, number one. Number two, either we move some of these dates, or if it is the way it is, I would be voting against it. I would not be voting to approve this ordinance as is. It's a very simple matter of economics. You go out there, and you look at the Wall Street, you look at what is happening out there, when you have big mortgage companies reporting net losses of huge amounts, largest mortgage companies in this country, and you see stock market taking a dive by 100 points or so. And then you see what is happening in the construction industry. More and more developers are dropping out of building projects. At one point, Los Angeles had over 70 projects on the pipeline. Guess what? 90% of them have disappeared off the face of the earth. They decided it costs too much, they can't sell it, they're not doing it. So we could set up in here all kinds of fees and structures, but if there's... So we could set up in here all kinds of fees and structures, but if there's not a single unit built, you do not collect one cent. And that's the whole issue. We're talking about $2,000 for pipeline. And there's this talk about, gee, the developer's paying for it. Let me explain one thing very clearly. The developer doesn't pay a dime. The developer adds that to the cost of that property and sells it to us, the taxpayers. We pay. The developer doesn't pay. It costs a business. So you want to buy that unit? It costs $2,000 more. Few years back, $10,000 more. Then we walk around and we say, gee, there's no affordable housing, nobody can afford it, our teachers can't live in here. Hello? Why? Because we have increased the costs. Now, four years ago, I probably would have voted for this. Four years ago, projects were moving very rapidly, people were building, developers were for it, economy was looking good, and we could have gone back. But I'll tell you, if we were here and that ordinance was in effect, we probably would have asked for that ordinance to come back so we could modify it. Very simple. San Fernando Corridor, we have an in-lu fee. I remember staff wanted $34 a square foot for it. We settled for $17 a square foot. Do you know how many single-family residential or multifamily residential marketplaces have been built on San Fernando Corridor since we adopted that? Zero. We have not collected one cent. The only projects that are in San Fernando Corridor is built, is built by subsidy of City of Glendale. That's it. We subsidize it. That's the only buildings that are built. And it will not be built because it just doesn't pencil out. It doesn't matter how good this report is, it doesn't matter how justified this report is, the reality is, out in the real world, when dollars and cents are moving around, if you can't make a profit, you can't sell it, you're not going to build it. So to me, I think we have two options in here. On these items, Mr. Mayor, you wanted to see, as far as if there was an ordinance to be introduced at a different date. Affordable housing, I would go with this. I think that is a good idea. And, and the reason for that is, if it's 100% and nine out of 10 times, these are projects that city subsidizes it, it would be foolish for us to charge them an impact fee because the city is the one who does the subsidy, like we did with another project. So we added a million dollars, and then we took a million dollars from the housing and gave it to the developer. It's like taking it from one pocket and putting it in another. It doesn't do anything for us. So as far as I'm concerned, on affordable housing, if you're doing 100%, a complete exemption and, and goes down as you have projects that come in there. Auto dealers, I would exempt them right out. Hotels, I would exempt them right out. They generate thousands, if not millions, of dollars for us. Square footage, I think if you put in a certain amount, if it's residential, 1,000 square foot, anything over that, you're going to have to pay. Land deduction, I don't have a problem with that. Second units, forget that, as far as I'm concerned, you know, if you're going to charge them, whether it's a second unit, third unit, fourth unit, you're just making it more complicated. You build a second unit, if you're going to charge them, then you charge them. If, if I want to vote for this, I would move the dates. I would say, starting 2010, you charge $2,000. From 2010 to 2013, on 2013, you go to 3,500. Till 2016, on 2016, you go to 7,000. In 2020, you go to $10,000. And every time you want to do this, you go back to, and I have no intention of being here on 2020, by the way, I just want to make you sure. So whenever that comes back, it should go to that council so they could look and see what the economic ramifications of all these are. We could have all these beautiful projects, and we passed, and let's not forget, we passed at least three projects in this city. One on Central, one on San Fernando, another one on, what is the other one? Help me there. Law stealers. All three of them put on the market to be sold because they're not going to build it. And one we've built as an affordable, the other two hasn't happened, and there's another one across the street that is, somebody's trying to sell it and nobody willing to buy it. So, there's an indication of, unless they're being built, you're not going to make anything. So it means the economy is not right. I'm hoping, and I'm, I may be completely out, but I'm hoping by 2010, that's three years from now, the market has changed. I may be completely wrong. So, my inclination is, vote no, and, and see what happens. Or vote yes, but change the dates further back to allow for the American market, the United States market, to improve so the economy actually supports this, then the developers will pay. But in the end, the consumers can afford to buy those units because ultimately, they're the ones who are absorbing the, the money.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, I'm trying to look at where we started. Over two years ago, we started this. The numbers we had for full amount, community said not to, no. We chanced you back and we stood here, we're at the tail end of all this discussion, even came down to a graduated rate. If anybody's familiar with the Cosmont Report, which lists all the taxes paid by every city in Southern California, there is no other city other than Glendale that has no impact fee and no business license tax. None. According to the report, we're one of the cheapest cities to do business in. Do you know what they're paying for a square footage of land lease on Colorado and Pasadena? $8 to $10 a square foot. Glendale, three. Wow, it's really tough to do business in Glendale. You want me to sit here and believe that nobody is going to come and develop in Glendale because we have no business license tax and no impact fees and our land is a third the value of our neighbor cities? I don't believe that at all. We've done everything we can to get to this point. And I support it. It's been agreed upon. I've sat here so many years and I've heard so many people come and say, you didn't include me in your negotiations, you didn't include my group in negotiations. We always hear that. 207,000 people, you tell me how we're going to get to 207,000 people. I bet you can go out there right now and find at least 20, 30,000 and say, well, I would have liked to have been involved in that too. But unfortunately, that is impossible to do. As far as I'm concerned, affordable housing, option four, seems like the best. Auto dealers exempt. Hotel development exempt because of what they do, what they provide to the city. Homeless square footage, 15 under square feet. Land dedication, private open space and second units, I have no comment on whatever my colleagues want. By gosh, for over two years of effort, if we say, well, gosh, it's too much now, well, gee, maybe we ought to try on a business license tax and watch the community come unglued. You know, we tried to do the least hurt to this community. Something that the community has agreed to, and at least the groups that were involved in this, agreed, other than the chamber, that this was a reasonable amount to pay a fair share. We're deficient on parkland, we have problems with libraries, and we're going to postpone it? Just who is going to pay and when are they going to start paying? Slip it down three years? Well, we have a new pipeline. We'll never get any money. Right now, it's what, 37, 32 million, up to 145, something like that? Wait three more years, it's going to be worse. We're never going to get any money out of this ordinance. So I think we got to bite the bullet because we've been at it two years. And the only reason it's back here today is a miscalculation on the commercial fee and some questions that we could have answered at that time if we had the commercial fee. But because it was going back to get that fee set, we said, well, look at these other things too. And here we are, now looking, well, maybe we shouldn't do this at all now. I think that's wrong. We got to bite the bullet. We owe it to this community and the people that live here.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay. Well, if you'll check the record, two years ago, I was maybe not warning, but I was certainly talking about the possibility of a downturn in the real estate cycle. And we are in it. There's no question about that. At the national level and obviously here in Southern California, and yes, even here in Glendale, there's a, a home and foreclosure, for instance, at a million one, right here in the city of Glendale. So, when I look at these fees, and as Mr. Yusefian mentioned, we still have yet to build one market rate condominium or loft or work lives face in the San Fernando Road corridor. I am a little more optimistic about our downtown condos, but the bottom line is absolutely nothing has been built to date. So I get very nervous when I see some of these fees. And incidentally, another concern of mine, well, number one, the downtown and the San Fernando Road corridor, we've worked for years and years and years trying to build some housing there, mixed use and so forth, so don't want to do anything that's going to diminish those opportunities. And then the second thing that concerns me is that person out in the world that happens to have a multifamily zoned property that wants to do something with it, that wants to build four units or six units or whatever it is they want to build. So I'm, I'm worried about two different types of development, I should say. And I just find these rates are, they're just not, they're just not appropriate. The 2,000 pipeline number, perhaps that's okay in the sense that they did get together with the development community, et cetera, et cetera. So perhaps that 2,000 pipeline number, I can go with that. But new projects at 3,500, and then that next jump in 2010 where new projects are now at 7,000 per unit, I just think that's too much of a jump, plain and simple. I just think it's way too much of a jump. So I, I would go for 2,000 for the projects in 2007, both pipeline and any new projects coming in. And then, at that 2010 date, I think the max I could go there would be 3,500, basically half of that 7,000. Because I don't think the cycle is going to get any better in 2008. I don't think the cycle's going to get any better in 2009. I hope I'm wrong. I hope, in fact, we, we see a, a uptick in this down cycle, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't count on it. Terms of the exemptions for the auto dealer and the hotel, I think that makes sense, the affordable housing, the, the same way. So in other words, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with the staff report on, on the other topics. But specifically, I just think these fees are too, are too high. And we need parks in this city, and our libraries need to be redone in many cases or new ones built. But I'm not sure that this is the appropriate approach.
Just a clarification, Councilman Quintero, the option four for the affordable housing, was that, was that, is that okay with you, just like Councilman Weaver and Yusefian outlined? Is that, is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, while you ask the question, Mr. Chapchan, I'm also in agreement on the affordable housing, the auto dealers and the hotels. The, the rest, I, I have to say, my interests in those have been already expressed by one or more of my colleagues, so I don't have anything to add there, and I would just turn it back to the mayor.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian? I, I think one thing that I, I think this, this will have even a greater effect on San Fernando Road than it will the rest of the city. The San Fernando Road, 1,000 square foot unit currently, requires a $17,000 to the housing. And then, let's take just...
Well, explain that, the affordable housing, because people watching the program want to know.
Because in, in San Fernando Corridor, under the state requires, because it is a redevelopment agency, it's mandatory by the state to provide affordable housing. What this council did in the past, said that you can have in-lu fee. So instead of building the housing, you can pay something in lieu of building the units. We had this, put a price on that, which is $17 a square foot. So if you build a 1,000 square foot unit on San Fernando Road, you have to pay $17,000 fee just to meet your obligation under the state law. So that is something we can't waive. We may reduce that amount, but we cannot waive it completely. Currently, the law is $17,000 for a 1,000 square foot house or unit in San Fernando Road corridor. If you add any of these prices by 2013, and if that number, the 17,000, does not change, you would have a $27,500 per unit subsidy, I mean, not subsidy, per unit fee, impact fee, you would have to pay. So, explain to me, why would somebody build market price housing in San Fernando Road, pay $27,000 per unit when they can go and build another housing in the other part of the city that is not in the redevelopment area and pay only 10,000? Makes no sense. So they won't do it. So as much as we may wish, as much as we may pave the streets and put trees on there and maybe put medians on there and, and change the zoning, bottom line is, the developers are not going to pay because that's more money. So more fees we put on, more expensive it's going to become at one point. Now, there will be a time that the economy will change, and people will say, you know what? I'm making so much money. The housing everywhere else has gone up so high that, you know, I don't mind paying $27,000. And that was a case like that three years ago, when you put a house on the market and there'll be four people standing in line and paying over the listing price. But the market has changed. There are many houses, I know, in very nice parts of Glendale, that there are homes that are on foreclosure lists. A lot of them, million dollars, 900,000, 800,000, they're all over the place. So why would anybody in their straight mind want to go out there and buy one of these condos? Because cost of construction hasn't come down. To produce that unit of housing, it's going to cost more than it is for you to go and buy one already made up. And you can get a house for 800,000 or 700,000 soon, why would you go and buy a condo for 650,000 or 700,000? Well, as you put more of these fees, because copper's not coming down, none of those materials are coming down due to the world economy. If they can't sell it in the United States, it goes somewhere else. So that material's not coming down in cost. And that's where my issue is in here. If Mr. Quintero would like to go there, I don't mind going there, but my suggestion was that we start the fees at 2000, at 2010. That means nothing until 2010. At 2010, I'm hoping that my crystal ball will tell me we will start moving up. In the last two years, we have kind of moved down, and others three years, that's five years, we're getting close to the seven-year cycle of starting to move up. So that was my thing, but his recommendation wasn't bad either.
First of all, and, you know, the in-lu fees in the redevelopment area were brought up, and as I understand it, the in-lu fees are made as an accommodation to the builders. Otherwise, they are forced to, by state law, dedicate 15% of the units as affordable. So if the...
So, if the in-lu fees are too high, they certainly have the state law available to them for which they can build the 15%. So, that's state law, and that's nothing that the city of Glendale did. We gave them an outlet. As far as I'm concerned, the cost of building units in other parts of the city are far less, far, far less than $17 a square foot. So, I don't think that argument really holds water. The other issue about the increase in these fees, it was mentioned that they should be linked to the CPI. Well, unfortunately, we are not buying with this money. We're not going out to buy groceries. We're not going out to buy shoes. We're not going out to buy bicycles or clothes or handbags. That's what the CPI consists of. We're using this money to build libraries, to buy land for parks, to build recreational facilities. So, if we're going to truly index the increase, the annual increase, then let's put a blend between the cost of purchasing land and the cost of construction, because we are going to be pouring concrete, buying glass, carpeting, et cetera. I think, you know, when you start to play the market and second-guess the market, I think we're running into problems. Because the market is going down, should we rescind the school fees to encourage development? Who's in favor of that? Because that's essentially what, what the argument is, is that the fees and the additional costs on building are too onerous in a downturning market, that we should, in fact, lift that to encourage development. Well, this isn't a measure to encourage development, and it's not a measure to discourage development. It's simply a measure to make sure that every new unit that's built and every new additional person that uses our parks or uses our library has, has funds with which, there are funds with which to accommodate them. Otherwise, if we don't, then it is the city subsidizing. We've been sitting through the study sessions that we have had, and we currently are in a real tight situation with regard to parks, libraries, athletic facilities, et cetera. If we're going to put 2,000 more units on the market, shouldn't each and every builder that builds that contribute to the additional infrastructure that's needed to accommodate? And it is quality of life. We want to have parks in Glendale. We want to have libraries. That's what makes a community, that's what makes a good community. There really doesn't seem that, we have seen plenty of developers here and Chamber of Commerce and real estate folks, but I don't see anyone here speaking for the children that use the athletic fields, the folks that use the parks. And, you know, all you have to do is open the paper, and you see a huge demand on the public for us to add more athletic fields, soccer fields, swimming pools, parks, dog parks, et cetera. We're doing a huge disservice if we, you know, eliminate these fees, delay these fees. The fees that, I mean, the notion that Mr. Yusefian has raised wasn't even contemplated or raised by the developers. I mean, it goes one step beyond the developers. And I saw some nods and, you know, an agreement when they heard, heard those comments, but, I mean, if the developers are willing to accept this, this current proposal, the chamber, chamber isn't, but the Realtors Association is willing to accept it. Who are we to take it one step further and make it even more accommodating to them? I think, you know, we're going in the wrong direction. And I love the developers. Some of them are my best supporters, but I've got to balance my, my thinking and my reasoning when we look at this. This motion, this proposed fee schedule, is really a neutered version of what it should be. And I really mean that. If I had my choice, if I was a one-man council, I would probably go with the 14,000 a unit. But I respect the efforts that the groups have put into it, the Realtors, the developers, staff. And if these are the timelines that they've come up with and the amounts, the graduated amounts, I will, I will swallow hard and agree to these amounts. I am not in any way in favor of extending the timelines for another three, four years or reducing it. This is what has come out of the, the study group, the stakeholders. And, and by the way, I don't even want to represent that it was a balanced group of stakeholders. I mean, this was maybe staff and the developers. Where was AYSO? Where are the park lovers? They weren't included. So, out of that group, when they come and tell me, "This is something we can live with", I think we're acting beyond our means and beyond responsibility by increasing it and making it even more favorable than what they've done. You know, as the market goes down, costs of land go down, costs of construction will go down, costs of labor will go down. There's all an equilibrium to it. We run into problems when we try and second-guess the market and guess what's going to happen in two years, in four years, and adjust these fees to catch up, not to get too far ahead or too far behind. And as I said, I'm going to swallow hard, accept these, these proposals, because I know it has come from hard work of the development community and the staff. As far as the affordable housing, I'll go with the option four. I agree to an exemption for the auto dealers, for the hotels.
Nominal square feet, do you want? 500, 1,000, 1,500?
For the nominal square footage, I'll say 1,000.
Okay. Go down to 1,000.
What, what was yours, 1,500? I mean, you know, I'll meet you halfway at 1,250 or anywhere in that neighborhood. Private open space should get credit, I believe. As far as second units, they should be treated as, as the initial units. And I, I mean, I urge my colleagues, "Let's go with this the way it is." I don't think we're going to pass the red face test if we give something even sweeter to the developers than they themselves have come to us with and said, "We're okay with this."
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
The three I said, I didn't have anything to say on, like, on the land dedication, the million-dollar threshold, the staff is recommending. On credits for private open space, no, no fee credits, a reduction on that. I think that's what you're saying. In light of the existing deficiency, the council may want to consider whether fee credits should be granted. So, if I'm reading that right, then what you're saying is don't do any reductions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, that is one of the options, based on the effect that it could potentially have, but the alternative, of course, is presented is anywhere from 25% to no credit whatsoever. But certainly, given the situation, that it would probably, the staff would recommend anything more than that, but...
No more than...
More than, no more than 25% because the credit of open space, that is above and beyond the required open space and expect in the ordinance about what would qualify.
I'll stick with none.
Okay.
And reduction of fee for second units, none.
Okay. Mr. Quintero?
Okay. Well, I'm willing to support the $2,000 for the pipeline and new projects, 2007, $2,000, and then new projects in 2010, 3,500. So, those are the numbers that I'm interested in, and I think that will work for everyone concerned, and hopefully, we will begin to have some housing in the downtown and San Fernando Road Corridor. That's what we've been talking about for years and years.
Mr. Mayor, can I move to a with the items, at least two of us, I don't know, John is totally there. Mr. Draymond?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
See, so make a motion. Let's see where we're at.
I have, I just have a question, informational. This variety of, there is input being given by the council. How is that going to be handled when we come back with a, with this? How will the options be handled? How will they be incorporated?
The one we recommend.
They will be incorporated, Mr. Mayor, members of the agency.
What I'm saying here is you, you don't hear a consensus here on some of these. So, how will that be handled?
Well, I think we need a consensus.
Okay.
Or we'll take a vote.
Well, Mr. Weaver made the motion at 2A with the modifications that, that you went through.
Yeah, with the directions on each category.
And so, that awaits a second.
Because it doesn't fly, impact fees are dead.
I would like to pass the gavel to Mr. Draymond. I would second 2A with the modifications as Mr. Weaver indicated.
To be noted, this, this will go down in flaming defeat. We don't...
Just see where everyone's at.
We may not agree with this. What it means is going down...
Because I guarantee you, I am not going where some of my colleagues are.
Uh, Mr. Starbuck?
Just, just a comment here before a vote's taken and dies seem to be cast. I see a lot of consensus on a lot of the internal issues, I mean, the options that were presented.
Yes.
Just a notation from your staff's perspective, I think it's important that we get something established as opposed to no development fees. I will point out, count from Phil is about 825 units in the major projects that are moving toward completion of the EIRs in the downtown area. They don't seem to be being held up, and they're the ones who, by all accounts, were the most represented and have spoken to you here today. So, our encouragement would be to try and carve a consensus that would implement something.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, I'd like to know where we stand on each of those issues with regard to consensus. That's, that's sort of what I was asking before. I didn't, I didn't clarify, I didn't make that very clear, but...
Want to go down?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should.
Maybe we can summarize.
All right. Let's...
At least let's narrow it down to where there's a difference.
There's a motion on the floor, and there's a second.
Affordable housing, option four.
And, and the motion is, Mr. Weaver, could you, or...
Yes, I'll say again. Affordable housing, option four, graduation. Auto dealers exempt.
Okay.
Tail development exempt.
Okay.
Additional, 1,250, or 1,000 or 1,500, 1,250, two of us agreed on that. And I don't care if we go 1,015. Land dedication, the 1 million-dollar threshold, staff's recommending.
Okay.
Private open space, none. Second units, none.
Okay.
And those last two aren't deal breakers for me.
Okay. And, and the timing, and as far as the, the prices are concerned, is exactly how the staff has recommended it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Which is $2,000 for pipeline, new projects in 2007 will be 3,500, new projects in 2010 will be 7,000, new projects in 2013 will be 10,500. That's the motion, correct?
And that's quite a compromise down from where we started.
So, we have a motion and a second. Clear on it?
I am.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond?
Well, it comes to me, does it?
D.
D comes before W, and...
That's right. You got it, man.
Yeah, I will vote yes.
Quintero?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Charian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yusefian?
No. Motion carries.
Will you adjourn?
Mr. Starbuck?
Had we intended to have an introduction, or do we need to bring the introduction back?
Come back. We'd like to come back with the public hearing.
To you. No. Well, this requires three votes.
No, no, I mean, when the ordinance...
Pardon me?
When the ordinance comes before us, it's going to take four votes.
No, three votes. Three votes.
It's not a zoning change.
Three votes. It's not a zoning issue necessary.
And they could change their mind.
Well, that's right.
At a time of ordinance.
I always keep an open mind.
Okay.
We'll have the ordinance back to you tomorrow.
Motion, second for adjournment?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Government can move...